There we go. So, once again, thank you, guys, for being here. I know we are still a little bit spread out. I promise, none of the board members bite, so if you guys do want to shuffle down... The focus this evening is going to be on the collaborative efforts among our school boards. However, we appreciate all of the public interest and value your input. We appreciate your input and insights and your enthusiasm to be here tonight. So, as we move through this process, know that there will be an opportunity in each of the sections that we work through for the public to participate and give feedback. But I do want to lay out some ground rules as we get started. This is something that we try to do in all of our school district meetings, just to kind of set the tone and precedent for the meeting. I'll lay out a few key ones, and then I'll ask if anybody has anything else that they would like to add. So, for ground rules tonight, we're going to ask that everyone be courteous and kindness to one another, be open to alternate ideas and thoughts, be future-focused, and be respectful of one another's time. As we work... Oh, excuse me, sorry. I was going to open that up. Does anyone have any other ground rules they would like to ask that we respect tonight? Okay. So, on that note, I am going to turn it over to Director Richardson to talk about her graphic recording document and how we are going to be processing tonight's session, as well as our parking lot.
So, as some of you may have seen graphic recording before, this is one of the things that I've been trained to do. It's really just dot journal note-taking of your words, and so I'm going to try to capture as much content that you deliver to me as possible. What I've set up in the templates is a post-analysis, similar to a Scrum analysis in business. So, we're going to go back over and think about, with some reflection, what went well, what could have been done differently, get some ideas from the group, how should we take action, and then we'll move to the second phase of the work. If I capture something incorrectly, if you're like, "No, no, that's not what I said," please correct me. This is not a piece of art, it's a piece of note-taking, like minutes.
I think it's a little bit of bold, I'm going to be honest. It's pretty artistic. So, on that note, as we move through the sections, our order tonight is going to be, we're going to open the floor up to our school board members first to process the questions. Then, we're going to share a little bit of data that we've already received from the public via our thought exchange that went out last week. And then, we're going to be opening the section up to the community to add any additional insights, thoughts, or maybe comments on other things that have come up during the process. So, on that first note, the first section is going to be what went well and what should we keep in regards to the recent bond. School board, do you guys want to take it away?
So, I'll start things off. So, at least from what I saw, and folks in the room can correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't see any want or desire to deviate away from trying to address the needs at the high school level. I didn't see a lot of, you know, want or messaging related to, "Hey, let's address the elementary versus the high school," or even, say, "the middle school." So, I think that we, as a district, chose, I think, the right element to address the needs at, being at the high school level. I hope folks would comment if that is accurate or not, but I think that, you know, choosing to address the needs at the high school level, I think resonates the most at this point in time with the community.
I'll add to that. I think that this time around, compared to the last time we went out for a bond issue, that the community was much more involved. We, as a board, really listened to their opinions and their advice. I think we did better in the bond election. We narrowed those who opposed by about 200 votes, so that's something. And I think the district was far more transparent and clear, and all of the thoughts and everything that was happening in terms of what we put out was more simple, more understandable, and more documented. So, there was much, it was much easier to see what was going on and everything that was happening in real time.
Okay. So, to continue on in the what went well, are there additional things that you feel that we should celebrate or that we made significant progress? And Director Nelson, you already touched on that a bit, so if anyone would like to expand on that. Okay. Well, I can go ahead and share some of the feedback from the thought exchange. Keep in mind, the thought exchange was more directed at where we could improve, but there were some valuable comments. One being that good schools' facilities do cost money, but they do attract outside people, such as doctors, corporations, to invest in the community, which leads to growth locally. So, that was just overall in support of school facilities in general. On that note, I will go ahead and open the floor to the public. If you could just raise your hand, and I will just pass the microphone around. Some of us may be hard of hearing, Jen.
Hello. Jennifer from the bond committee. I would agree with Jose that we narrowed down as a committee group what school needed to be addressed first. I should have brought my glasses, sorry, guys.
Sorry. Consolidation around the needs of the high school. Community was involved. We came close, almost 350 votes. Simple, clear, documented information. Good schools attract professionals. And then, it can start with you.
Well, obviously, I think we came close, not close enough. Transparency was a little bit better, not complete. Well, we're on the what went well, so let me keep with that. But, for the most part, I think just overall, as a committee group, we did address the fact that, as the group and as public, we do need to address the high school first over the other facilities. That's it for me.
Is it fair to write "improved transparency"? Is that...
That can go off of... I think that kind of applies to another one of your squares, but however you want to do it is fine.
Megan Thompson. I think the transparency was there for those that wanted to find it. And so, I think the documentation, the flyers, everything was there, the websites. I thought the school district did a good job staying at the 10,000-foot level. This is what we're doing. You know, I think there's just people that aren't going to do it, want to vote one way or the other. And so, people that didn't want it to be transparent decided it wasn't going to be. So, I think the transparency was definitely there, and I agree that one building was the right choice.
I feel like I should clarify what I meant. Maybe transparency wasn't the right verbiage to use. Maybe it was... Oh, I hate these ladies.
Transparency probably wasn't the right verbiage for me to use. It would have been options. More transparent options. Let me just...
That's to be improved or went well?
To be improved.
Well, I agree with you on that. I found the website, both the bond, the PAC website and the school district website, to be really informative, and I attended a couple of community sessions. One that was down in the civic auditorium, and Jose and Davina spoke really, you know, really clearly about what was in the bond and, you know, what to expect. But what I wanted to compliment the board for the year of the bond committee, you know, to... And that was fairly open to, I mean, you know, there was a group of about 60 that started, but I don't think you would have discouraged or turned anyone away who wanted to come and just listen in. And I learned so much in that, in those sessions, and it was really clear to me about the need and the reasons for making the choices that you made. And I realized that, you know, that information really wasn't as available to everyone as it was to me, but, you know, there was, you did provide a lot of information.
I'm Scott Higgy, and I love microphones. I think the one thing I thought was great was I thought there was a lot more positivity. I mean, people, generally speaking, were more positive, and I think there was a lot of momentum kind of moving in a positive direction. Maybe we didn't get all the way to the end, but I think relative to other attempts, there was much more momentum heading in a positive direction.
Thank you for your assistance. We can maybe do a little duet later, since I too love a microphone. I was part of the political action campaign, and there are a lot of things that really went well in my mind, but something that I take a lot of pride in is that we had such a huge voter turnout. And the bond didn't pass, and that stung personally, but, and I posted this publicly, which I'm probably going to kill my Facebook anyway, but I was just so grateful that Wasco County ran such a great election, right? And I don't have to worry about that. I trust in it. We didn't win. Like, I can let that go. It was great democracy, right? And so, if it had been a low turnout and we had lost, I think I would have felt worse about it, right? I really wanted to see every yes vote and every no vote, and then understand those no votes a little better.
Any other hands?
I know the board was already supposed to be done speaking, but just listening to you guys talk about what went well, I sat in on some of the early 2019 discussions about how we were going to approach the bond situation back for that one, and, you know, were we going to start with middle schools or elementary schools? And there was so much work that needed to be tackled, but I distinctly remember meeting in the library here at the middle school, and there being like 12 people in the room. And it was 12 people trying to decide what direction this whole thing was going to go for that last bond, and so I just want to thank you. This just seemed like to be, it was so much more of a robustly supported effort this time. And so, if you're here and you were part of that committee or the PAC, I want to just thank you very much for being so involved in this. It seemed like it was a community-wide effort to try to get this passed, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to give Director Richardson just a second to catch up. Are we good? Yeah, since we're coming to the close, it seems like of that square, why don't we just do a quick recap? That's a great idea.
Okay. So, just to review, and if I misspeak what your words were, please tell me. So, we heard that, just from Joel, just recently, broad-based engagement and involvement of the community. There was consolidation around the need of the high school as the major need for the district and the focus of the bond. The community was involved, both with advice and opinions. We came really close, like around 300, 350 votes. There was simple, clear, documented information on the website and provided. Good schools attract professionals. That was from the survey. Maybe some discussion about transparency, we'll get to that, what can be done differently. We appreciated Jose and Davina, who presented well. The bond committee went well. Wasco County election process was good. There's a lot of positivity and momentum. Maybe we can leverage that for a plan future. And voter turnout was really good, and we appreciate all of you in the room. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. So, we're going to go ahead and move to the next square, which is what we would change. So, the prompts are, what could we have done differently? And that could mean, where did we have problems? What was frustrating to us or to others? Or what held us back? Board, I'll open the floor to you first.
I'll just start out with saying, with some conversations I've had, we can't expect everybody to go to our website. We need to reach out to them and go to where they are, if that means putting a group together or whatever. If we're going to put the work in, let's put it all in.
Okay. Well, on that... Oh, do we have one?
Hi, Lori Schalquist. Is there a possibility for the next bond measure to maybe give them, give the voters an option, like A and B?
I don't know. Have you ever seen a bond like that?
I haven't, that's why I'm asking.
Well, that's kind of what we do in the bond process in the committee, is we go through those...
Right, no, I understand that, but giving the community the option to, you know, to pick which one they would like to go with, because then maybe by giving them a choice, maybe they won't always vote no.
Do it by pulling before it gets voted on.
Right.
Once you file, I mean, that is the measure.
Okay.
So, it would have to be prior to Jen's point about, it has to be done during the process, and then when you kind of arrive at that point in time in which you submit the formal filing with the county...
Right.
Then it's, hey, option A or whatever the community was rallying behind.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the whole process. This is my first time coming to a meeting like this, because I want to be involved, so...
Yeah, that would be...
It would have been, yeah. Okay, okay. Just a thought, thank you.
My name's Casey, and I think one thing that would have been really nice to have done differently would have been communicating more alternative funding methods. I noticed personally, in this last bond, there were a lot of things that could have been funded by outside sources that didn't necessarily have to be on the back of the taxpayers, and I think if we could segregate those things, we might have a better chance of lowering not just the bond amount, but increasing voter yes or voter support.
I have a comment. I found when I was going door-to-door, there were a lot of seniors that were very confused about the difference between city council and school district. Their concern was, they thought the mayor and the city council were going to run with the money to provide the school. And I ran into that at my church and some other people as well. And I think we might have lost a lot of senior votes because they didn't understand what was actually to ask. They were just worried about the bottom line. How much money are you taking from me?
In that respect, I've been thinking about seniors also, and I've heard of other states where there's, bonds can be proportional and be laid less heavily, or a lesser percentage laid on people over a certain age. So, looking into those kinds of possibilities might be helpful. No possibility to do that?
No, but it's, it's not like Washington, it's not like...
Okay, or Alaska.
You know, I'm just saying, they actually have, are the tax packs on seniors and council that are more...
Okay. Okay, one last thing on seniors. If we could, if you, if, I never, I came late to the community, so I haven't been to any other meetings either, but if it could have been explained more to seniors how it could benefit them, but putting forth this money, I think everybody would like, in principle, to see a new school, but how it would benefit them, either indirectly, how growth in the community would come to benefit them, or how they could use the new facility in some way. And I know there's always drawbacks in that, but it, you know, might be a possibility.
All right. Hi, everyone, I'm Marie. It's nice to be back in this room. The last time I was here was when the community advisory committee began last year. I have many things to say. However, I'll speak from my, what I learned while I was canvassing. What I kept encountering was, of course, you know, a lot of concern about the cost. And also, I think, a lot of folks, I don't think, understand that the school district does not receive funding to maintain facilities. I think it would be helpful if the district were able to provide the community with how much money it costs to keep the lights on. I think people need more context. People believe that they're paying more taxes than in other parts of the state, and I think they need more information. And I think there would be more willingness if people had a greater understanding of how, just how great the challenges are for the district to keep the building safe and operational. I also think there's an element where people need to be shown just how much things cost today. If there are packages that are presented, I think it would be great if there was almost like a legend where you say, "Okay, if you want a new staircase, this is how much a staircase costs at these days. This is how much an elevator costs." Context. I think that's the only way that we can get to that transparency, where people feel empowered to make decisions and might feel willing to make a sacrifice when they know that the money... It's a great ask, but also, it's a great ask to ask children to continue going to school in a school that was constructed for 400 students. And so, I think that the ask may look less when people have more information and see that even though they are paying a lot to the school district, that the cost of providing public education is high. And also, a lot of folks asked me, "Well, is the district going to be selling any properties?" So, I think giving folks that context, that information of what are they selling, what are they doing, are they seeking grants? I think that's going to help build trust among the community as well, to see that the district really is thinking in the interest of the children, of the community, and thinking down the line. So, anyhow, thanks to everyone who's in this room and for coming back to the drawing board.
I'd like to make a few comments if I could. I'm a senior, so I'm 81 years old, so I think I qualify. Yeah. So, I like the idea of paying more attention to seniors. And I think throughout the whole process, we should have part of that just for them. So, for instance, in terms of going to their places in order to inform them all the way along, and be proactive in terms of looking for, looking at what other states do to provide relief for seniors through, in the process of taxation. So, as to the, you know, the county, can they seek, do ways to investigate that and maybe do, have more of an effort to assist seniors and provide some relief for the taxes that they have to pay? The other thing is, I think, in terms of going to the seniors, you need to, we need to present ourselves at the senior center, we need to present ourselves to senior living places, and just have, when we're trying to pass a bond, to explain to them, I like the idea of, you know, what is in it for you? What is in this bond for you? And to really make them feel like they're being listened to and heard, because they are a huge percentage, seniors are a huge percentage in the dials of the vote, and that's probably where we lost a lot of votes.
I have so many thoughts, because I was just, you know, really gung-ho about this and, you know, worked with some really great people on the campaign, and I've heard from a lot of people afterwards. So, a couple of things that you said, first of all, Dave, I totally agree with you that we can't expect people to go to the website. We need to go to them. And so, my thought is to have a number of public town halls. And I know that's a lot of extra work, but, you know, when I went to someplace, I mean, a lot of, you did go out and talk to a lot of people, but it was mostly at, at least to my knowledge, it was like at community groups, so the Lions and, you know, Kiwanis. And so, that's a, that's a group, usually that's a group of people who are probably already going to be supportive. And so, public, open to the community, multiple town halls where they can go and listen and then ask questions, because I found the one that I went to to be really informative. So, I think that would be really important, and that would maybe address some of the transparency concerns that we've heard. The other thing is that the most common thing that I heard in terms of why people voted no who really wanted a new high school is that there wasn't a good enough illustration, design, plans of what the school was going to look like. And, you know, basically, the comments that I heard were, and these were from people who could afford to pay for the bond, pay for the, you know, the extra taxes, but they didn't want to buy something they couldn't see. And so, I understand, you know, how expensive it is to make those plans and get the architectural plans, you know, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to them and then have the community vote no, but that's what they want. And so, I think maybe, you know, you need to consider some other way of funding it than waiting for the bond to happen. I don't know.
Kind of. I just want to, I think these are going to kind of cross over, but I don't see Lori's the differently part as far as maybe polling options before it goes to the ballot. I see the word options, yeah. So, add maybe prior polling options, and then this young woman right here mentioned a bunch of things I was going to, so to add longevity to the process. What I mean by longevity is maybe kind of start the town hall sooner, the announcements of, "Hey, we're, this is, this is the board process. We're going to hire X, Y, and Z to go through this process," and really push out to the community the information of really what the process is, rather than maybe the board doing certain things just in your guys' work sessions, or maybe some of the process. I know time is precious to everybody, and we all donate our time, but I think maybe just opening up some of those meetings that maybe were just a little better scheduling for you guys to be done together, maybe just really kind of biting the bullet and really open it up to everybody in that process. And the other option is, this isn't, these are ideas, so they're kind of crossing the lines here on your squares.
You're at Lumber, not a splitter.
Yeah, no, yeah, my mind doesn't work that way, but, I mean, just as far as the other ideas, I don't even know if this is feasible, because I think we all can agree for the years, there's very little community involvement. That's something I think you all are trying to work on, and I think that we can say, as far as the community, we're all trying to improve ourselves as well. But maybe different group settings, gosh, it's really, add time, but like, okay, like, this bond committee comes in, and these are all of our ideas for the first 30, and then dip it up, because I don't know, time-wise, if it would be efficient to say, "Hey, we're going to 200 of the community and whack it out in a year," or if we're going to do like a quarterly meeting process of maybe 30 community members, and then this is this quarter, and then you move, and nobody can serve on that process for the entire time. It needs to be rotated out to different community members, because everybody's work schedule's different. Like, it's, it just is. And some, Lori works, and... And some, Lori works and so some people can't donate their time to the process and this is where they can finally start to show up, but then at this time, it's a little late, right? Not saying you're late, Lori, I'm just saying. That's not what I meant. Yeah, I think she's, yeah, no, I think she knows what I mean. But that, I don't know, those are all just ideas, but kind of crossing the lines of differently too.
Speaking on that, that should be our job, right? If we have a short time period, we should make it convenient for what all you, if, what you need. If it means Saturday sitting down, so be it. I mean, that should be on us if that's what we, if we want to get the bond across, we should come to you, not you have to cater to us. That's what I'm saying. But the meeting shouldn't be, here's our meeting, you come to us or tough luck. We have to make time for you also, right? Not to put what you said down, but I'm 54, I'm not a senior, but I'm on fixed income and I get it. Money's tough. The other thing I seen is, or I hear a lot of, is the old maintenance thing. We don't take care of what we've done in the past. But we have a line item to where we do take care of things now or have a budget for that. I think it's up to, it's just getting that information out. You know, we're, we're not the same board, we're not the same leadership we were 10 years ago. And the one thing we did do is make a line item just so that we had maintenance funds set aside that couldn't be touched. So I just wanted to put that out.
So I have two things. The first one, kind of connecting with what everyone's talking about as far as, you know, more communication out there and meeting people where they're at, don't underestimate the power of social media. If used actually appropriately, you guys will get more than like 40 views on your live streams, I guarantee it. It's all about distribution, smart distribution. So it doesn't all have to be foot power. So that was part one. Part two? That, that one is actually a crossover because that is something that could be done differently. But that was an idea to help it be done differently. The other thing I was very disappointed about was that there was chosen to be no information with the ballot. And I'm looking at you because you're the one who made that decision. And I really, on the, finalizing the bond language, you guys elected to not include additional information about the bond on the ballot, you know, with the ballot. Instead, the PAC mailed out information that was not very complete. We got a, I got a vote yes flyer from. So I got a booklet that was all vote yes. Okay. But I'm saying on the actual ballot that goes out, you chose to not include an additional packet of information with that ballot specifically. And if you have people who are not on media or people you're not able to reach in person, would it not be prudent to have, you know, the base information included with the ballot when people are voting, much like when we have our political votes? You usually have like a little blurb about what it is in more detail. But it was, if you actually look at the signed document, yeah, if you look at the signed document for when you finalize the bond language and got it submitted to be put on the ballot, it was selected if you were going to have supplemental material or if you were choosing specifically not to. And we chose specifically not to. And that was a mistake because if you have even just a little blurb of basic information in there that everyone should know regardless if they're vote yes or vote no, it's accessible for everyone regardless if they have internet access. It's there for every voter.
Hey, so there's another common theme in talking with people that we could have done differently and that was improved clarity about hard and soft costs way earlier. It is something we could do differently next time. And it made it really frustrating to have conversations with people even after interviews occurred that explained hard and soft costs and even after the FAQs were improved to clarify what those were and why they were all in the bond and that not all school districts put them in their bond. Once the social media feed on the square footage thing took off, there was no, nothing that could be said to explain soft costs and hard costs to reel that back in. Yeah. So that was definitely one part of it.
Are you ready? She's ready.
So this is an idea. I don't know if you, if, I'm not sure this would work, but architects frequently have architectural competitions. And architects come forward and do a design based on a very preliminary statement of needs that is very pictorial. And I've never seen this done in something as big as a high school. But if it could be done either for the whole thing or the, some part of it, some major part of it, then you might have, and everybody, it could be said, this is just preliminary, a preliminary idea, but then you would have something to show people before the cost of the architect starts.
I don't know if I need a microphone. Can people hear me? First off to the design, yes. I don't, people won't necessarily hold you to the finer points of graphic design, but to have something out there that I think also incorporates hard and soft costs so it shows, demonstrates what you have done, but you need to visualize that with some sort of a graphic design that kind of shows people, okay, this is what I'm buying, statement's been made. The other thing on a different topic that I haven't heard unless I've missed it, I think there was some conflicting information regarding the need for the new high school and the old high school. Do we need a new high school? Well, we're going to continue to use the old high school in some way, shape, or form. That wasn't really stated clearly. And the fact that that old high school could still be used undercuts your argument for a new high school. So there needs to be some, frankly, in my humble opinion, some other use for the old high school. Sell it. That's my opinion. But don't have conflicting information out there saying that we're going to build a new one, but also use the old one. The old one we can't use, but yes, we are using it. Clarify.
That, you know, we went through a community group, over 60 of us, for a year and a half. The old high school was something that is very near and dear to this town's heart for whatever reason. And so that was always something that was on our forefront is how do we address that? So that's a great comment. The other thing that we really wrestled with was timing. Do we go for bond in last May or do we do it when tax season goes out? That's a tough one because not everybody got their ballots and they got their tax statements. And back when we started this process, the economy was in a lot better shape. So I think we were, you know, we didn't want to go in May because the whole transparency thing was definitely on the forefront. We have to be transparent to this community. We have to show them what we're doing, how the money's going to be spent. That was the message from the get-go with this community group. And so trying to take into all those accounts, I think we did the best we could, came darn close, but there's opportunity and hopefully we do it again.
If we don't have any more comments on that, let's do a quick recap just so I can keep it in everyone's mind and I can add anything I've missed. So what could have been done differently? The website can't be the only channel of communication. Communicating alternative funding sources. Clarify specifically for seniors, senior citizens on who and what. And more about that too, going and reaching out to the senior center, making the case for why it matters to them. Outreach and involvement to the seniors again. Provide info about operational and facilities costs so there's some context, okay? Consider providing more cost info like itemized lists for context. County options that would help mitigate costs and communicate the capital budget bucket so the process by which we set aside funds for facilities and maintenance. Bring the information to the people. Have more town halls was an idea that came out of that. We need a diagram or a visual. There are multiple callouts to that. Polling options before the vote. Start sooner and communicate the process. Information with the ballot. Thanks Kelly. Casey. With like supplemental info with the ballot if that's possible. Early clarity about the hard versus soft costs, visuals again, and a clear rationale about why we can't use the old high school if we're going to use the old high school. That didn't make sense.
What you were talking about as far as the information. So I got three flyers and it might've been that one came to my husband and one to me or whatever, but we ended up getting three flyers and one of them was like the day after the ballots arrived and then, you know, another one and then another one. So we got three flyers after ballots arrived. And I mean, we'd already made up our minds and I assumed that everybody else had already made up their minds. So talking about getting the information out earlier and getting it into the hands of the voters, you know, that flyer had some good information, but it was probably ignored by the people who had already decided to vote no, you know? And so that should have gone out way earlier in my opinion.
We've already kind of launched ourselves right into the next square, which is ideas. So the prompts for this, although it sounds like you guys are doing just fine with no prompts, are what ideas do you have for future work together? Where do you see the opportunities to improve or what has untapped potential? And school board, I will open it up to you guys to begin. Along the social media idea, I had an idea about a social media SWAT team. It might be too hard for one person to constantly monitor all of the streams of social media all the time, but we could put together a small team that has, for example, assigned a day of the week. And they don't have to be the possessor of all of the information and knowledge. They just need to know who to ask and who to direct people to when they have questions and be willing to say, I don't know the answer, I'm going to go find it and a handoff the next day. You guys gave me the idea when I was writing seniors, I was thinking you could do, we could do a seniors to seniors. So seniors in the high school talking to seniors in the community. They can learn a lot from each other. Town halls are on here to increase community connections and dividing the work, dividing the work was an idea. Okay, I'll open up the floor. Does anyone have any comments, ideas, additional ideas other than what we've already been stating?
There was one mentioned about.
Yeah, what about properties?
That wasn't on there anywhere in your notes. Oh, okay. So I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking, I'll say this, we should probably kind of list our properties and what's on them. And so everybody knows everything that we own. And I do know this, one of the reasons it's hard to talk about properties is our future use is always changing in response to the dynamics of things going on in the community. For instance, the, about 100 acres in the Columbia View Heights, that has changed several times what we were planning to do there since I've been on the board and it was changing before I ever got on the board. So we don't, you know, we might say one thing at one point and then that idea is gone and we're, we have another idea. So we ought to keep the public aware of those changes in thinking and why.
So I've got two things. One, kind of building off of what John was saying is it really would not be that difficult to have a, an online portfolio added to the website of what your guys' real estate portfolio essentially looks like, the initial investment purchase amount. So that way people can also kind of gauge, oh, is it a good time for them to even sell properties right now? No, it's not. Or yes, it is. And I think that would just be something very easy and realistically would, I think make a lot of people feel really good to just be aware. And then those properties could potentially be built into some sort of physical education program later on. But the second thing I really wanted to talk about was off of the prompt of untapped potential. I think that Watanaka campus as it sits has a lot of untapped potential. And then when you consider the amount of square footage directly behind the building and setback requirements, there's a lot of potential there for expansion, more so than what we would technically need by what the renderings we're trying to get for a whole brand new build of a school. I think the renderings that they had over there was roughly 110,000 square feet needs. And behind Watanaka, including Watanaka, and then the Watanaka addition would have space for 115,000 square foot school. So a larger school. And that would not even impede upon the tennis courts that are already there or anything of that feature. And so it would be low impact on the grounds because you wouldn't be messing with the athletics or any of the practice fields that are currently there, even though those need to be addressed. Those can be addressed with other funds and sourced other ways. And also really, when you come down to it, are a little bit less of priority versus getting kids in a cohesive, accessible location where they can all learn appropriately versus having to deal with a slightly outdated athletics area. I know athletics is a big thing for a lot of people, but I think our community has a lot bigger problems than trying to make everyone happy. We need to make everything functional versus pretty and happy. But Watanaka, expanding Watanaka.
Okay, I feel like the Jeopardy person and we just hit a daily double. So if anybody can make the sounds, that'd be great. So that was actually one of the thoughts that was listed in our thought exchange as well. And to prepare for this meeting, the district did meet with the architectural firm Opsys post-bond to discuss that potential. And we have asked Opsys here tonight, who are the gentlemen that are lurking in the back, ever so nice next to these beautiful charts. And I am going to ask everybody to kind of turn your attention to them and I will turn it over to Steve. I will, Alec, oops, sorry. I'll turn it over to Alec to take it away.
Yeah, that'll work. Thanks, thanks everyone. I did want to say, you know, we do this across the state. This is by far the largest on planning committee by probably double the number of any community. Doesn't matter how big a community is. So it was really impressive in the, what we call the drop-off rate. That's people that don't make the last meeting from the first meeting was really low. I mean, it was amazing. So, you know, that was something really well done by the community was the amount of engagement and people stayed way after the meeting, kept talking about things. And so we're, you know, we appreciate that because obviously these things come from the community. We were asked to look again at other options and I think there was, I mean, I don't know if it was made here, but one of the, one of the audience out here I heard before the meeting was saying, and this is always an issue, do you, do you repair what you have or do you build it all new? It's always a question. And sometimes repairing costs, as you know, if you ever renovated your house, sometimes it's cost the same amount or more, sometimes it doesn't. And so we were asked to look ironically at the idea that was just presented about Watanaka as an alternative for a major renovation and addition to that project. And just a little bit of, and it's interesting, I'll add one thing, and I don't know if it was quite on the list, but we were getting, you know, the district was watching social media and we would get questions during the campaign in the amount of really wildly different numbers. This gets to that spreadsheet, like how big is the high school? It's, I think, 153,000 square feet is the number. And believe me, we'd like double check those three different times. And yet we got numbers that ranged way different numbers. What is the bond? How much per square foot? The hard and soft costs? So these facts did seem to vary and it'd be a good idea to try and make sure we could get all the facts. So we did take the program which was developed through the bond committee and through using standards from the state, which brought, you know, and some, some ideas that were brought from the committee about some improvement, some room for possible growth. So the program we were looking at, it's about 160 we were looking at, it's about 167,000 square feet, thereabout, for the, for the project, and so we looked at the existing Watanaka campus, which is somewhere right around 65 to 70,000 square feet, and so you're, you're probably, you know, a little less than half of the size of what would be the replacement's high school. And so, as you probably remember, and there's always a debate, do you do renderings or not? It's 50/50, I could tell you, across the state, sometimes we do renderings, sometimes people think this rendering looks too expensive, sometimes we don't do them. I think it doesn't hurt most of the time to do some renderings of what it looks like, because it's very exciting, I can tell you that. But we did look at it over here, so this is the one that was in the bond, the field's here, Watanaka's up there, Chetwick's over there, this is the biggest, easiest open piece of property without doing anything to the field and stadium. This shows the Watanaka building here, we just looked at options about pieces that we thought, and part of the cost issue is, will the, what are the costs of the renovation of existing pieces, and some of the elements, like the music and cafeteria, because of their height and everything, have more seismic upgrades that are required? And so we just took a quick stab at saying, well, what would be easy to save, the one-story portion, because of, again, less seismic issues, the gym, there are grants for seismic upgrades, so that's a possibility, as was done at the, at the main high school several years ago. And so this kind of ends up being about, you know, somewhere around maybe 115,000 square feet of new, and another 50,000 square feet of the existing building, and then looks at this, at the east end being a potential field development and parking. So I think, as was pointed out, there is enough space, it's not like wildly amount of extra space, but there's enough space, this would be a two-story addition, there is enough space to develop on this side and keep some of that building. What would the cost differential be? There's going to be some savings, is it 10, 15, 20%? It's somewhere in that range. So it's not nothing, but it is something, and so it is certainly a viable option. It may not be the most efficient when you're all said and done, because you're working with the existing building, the classrooms are relatively small, there are a bunch of things that would have to be studied, but it is an idea probably worth pursuing a little bit further, to look and see what those cost differentials would be, to know how it might affect the overall building. The other thing that comes into effect currently, the innovations and other programs are in the building, so then you have to think about, do you phase the project, which may add a little bit to the cost, and do it over a longer time, so that you build the addition, and then move, say, innovations or something into that, and then renovate and move those people around, or do you, you know, build this building and move innovations back into the existing high school? There's a lot of issues around how you do a renovation addition project, but there are successful ones. We renovated and additions for San Barlow High School, and very similar to this, also the Gresham High School was addition renovation, our recently done McDaniel High School in Portland was addition renovation, about the same percentage, 60% new, 40% existing, so those are all possibilities that, that one can look at. But that, that's about, this was like a two-day exercise, so it wasn't in-depth, but if there are any questions about those ideas, or questions about other ideas that came up through the process, or just ideas people have that relate to the facilities, be happy to answer those, yes?
So this idea was, was slightly explored during the community action work, and Watanaka as a building has slightly worse state score than the existing high school. So that's, it's a concern for me, also having been in that building quite a bit, that entire, not the entire, but if you look at the green rooms, the reddish room and the brown room, they have no external windows. Yep, that section in there. I, I do, I do have serious concerns about its usability, period.
Yeah.
Do the, does the placement work? Great, that's fine. I just really feel like that's verging on a money pit, based on the grotesquely itemized spreadsheet of its facility problems.
Josh and Casey.
To kind of go off of what you were saying, that score that you're talking about, Watanaka wasn't actually even evaluated for several of the categories on that sheet, because it was not actively being used as a school, so its athletics and its cafeteria, those sort of things weren't actually being evaluated when you're looking at that score.
That's interesting, because it's been part of the base of the progress.
Right, but if you look at that 2019 facilities report where they go through and they itemize based off of capacity and all that sort of stuff, you'll notice there's several categories Watanaka wasn't even looked at, which ironically would have been categories Watanaka would have excelled at, like the gymnasium. I think we can all pretty much agree that, yes, there are needed repairs, like all of our facility gymnasiums do, but in its essence, it's actually still has great bones, it's got a great floor, it's got a lot of viability to it, and would have scored relatively well, and probably better than some of the others. But that, that could go along with transparency. I felt like that report was made to make it look like all these other, you know, that school was scored way down, when it could have been like, this is what the scores were, but notice that these categories were not counted for that school. You know, so that way. We're getting partial information, and I think when some of us uncover partial information, and then part of the information we find, that's where our mistrust is, it's like, why didn't you just tell us from the beginning that part of the reason why that score has a lower average is because those other categories weren't even considered for that school? Yes?
I just want to expand on those facility condition assessments, and then the long-range plan, so just so everyone's aware, so those two documents are a requirement for the Oregon Department of Education to be eligible for the matching grant, what's referred to as the awesome grant. So as we sit here today, those two documents expire at the end of this calendar year, so we will no longer be eligible for that matching grant. So in January, the state has what's called the Technical Assistant Program Grants, or TAP grants, as most folks know them as, to help offset those costs or to pay for those two endeavors, so we will need to be doing those again. And one of the, I guess, positives, the legislator, in this past legislative session, and you might think I say this wrong, but it's correct, the pot of money for this grant, for the matching grant, overall was reduced, however, they decided to increase the award amounts. So for this past bond, we were eligible for $4 million, so now they've upped that to $6 million. So anything kind of moving forward, we would actually be eligible for $6 million. Now, however, again, it's contingent upon having those two documents, so we checked with ODE just a couple weeks ago, if we file and apply, because the application's actually coming up in about a week, on December 14th, we have to apply if we want to put anything on the May 2024 ballot. They would still accept our facility condition assessment and the long-range facility plan for that scenario, beyond that, then we got to redo it over again. And, and those processes, some of you in this room may have been, there, it's not just a check the box with the state and you, you receive your money, it's a process, someone has to physically go and populate those spreadsheets, every building has a building ID number with the state, so you look at, it sounds like you've gone through them, so must be a spreadsheet lover, but every campus isn't just considered one document. If it's got separate buildings, each separate building has its own spreadsheet, right? And so that has to be done, coupled with the long-range plan, which is inclusive of community meetings and other elements like that, population studies and whatnot, so really, we'd be looking at spending all of 2024, kind of doing those two, probably into 2025, to have those complete and resubmit it back to the ODE, so that we could once again be eligible for the matching grant, which, again, got up to $6 million.
You said that right, you've got the microphone, but I want you to expand, so we can understand that it's not the amount of the bond that gets the matching $6 million, it's that the bond, whatever you put out passes, whether it's $90 million, $40 million, $6 million, that, that goes with the passing bond, not stipulated by the bond amount.
Correct. So some, so locally, you've probably, I think in the last couple of years, do for, I took advantage of this grant, they put out a $4 million bond to their community and actually received $4 million. Those are the metrics that go into what the amount, were eligible, or had been eligible for $4 million, will be eligible for $6 million, but to Jen's point, I mean, if we had, say, a bond measure that was only $50 million, it still remains at $6 million, if it was $140, it's still the same amount.
Just to clarify, I'm just going to turn the, I'm going to, oh. But I just want to clarify on that, so if they are accepting the potential extension on those reports, if we're able to put something together for the May ballot, are you saying that the people who are awarding us, or were going to award us that $4 million, are going to actually award us $6 million if we put a bond together and prove it on May? Or we just get to reapply to potentially be awarded $6 million?
Yeah, I do, and so, and that goes to Jen's point, so we can reutilize those documents if we apply on the 14th of December with another package, we would obtain $6 million if, and only if, the bond measure passes. So as an example, so in November, because we didn't pass that, it's not like we're receiving the $4 million from that effort, right?
But for the November ballot, we were on the commissary list, so to speak, like when you go to that website and put that $4 million match, you can see all the districts that were potentially going to get awarded, only one of them actually passed their bond and got the votes.
Correct.
But there was like seven of them on there, and we cut. Now, if I were to go onto that website for May, does this upcoming, would we be on that already, or are we like, no?
No, that's, that's the December 14th deadline, is that we would have to submit our application, making it known to ODE that we are putting a bond measure on the ballot.
Do you want to have results back from that? Do we apply in December?
We, yeah, they do, I can't remember how many days prior to the election, but, yeah, there's a process.
If we had their list of the districts that were paying commissary, and the promised districts, had, there was this, I think, month or four, and so, and with all this?
Yeah, if you go, if you work back, say, whatever, however, say it was like, I'm just throwing a number out here, four months prior to the election, it'd be the same if you work back from May versus November. There, there is, I don't remember off the top of my head, though.
I just want to, because you mentioned, right now, we are a little bit past the pathway, we are, we are quite fast, we are squares, we're doing really good, and I think that's, I just want to, we're going to check in with everyone, maybe take a couple more minutes in the section and move on.
So regarding the placement of, of a school building, I mean, one of the things we talked about in the, you know, the community group, the bond committee or whatever it was, the idea of keeping the Watanaka school building active for the students who are currently attending there, the Innovations Academy, because if that's torn down or under renovation to build a new school, they, they have nowhere to go. So that was considered, at least to my recollection, and it was one of the decision, one of the reasons that, you know, the, the location that was on this current bond was, was chosen. About grants, so I'm just going to throw three ideas out there for additional sources of funding, because someone mentioned, you know, be creative. So the city and the county have given a lot of money to Columbia Gorge Community College, and I'm not sure how that works, but, you know, they did give a lot of money, and I don't know if they could perhaps be approached to consider, you know, some, something for a new high school, because they all know, Mr. Haggy, they all know, is he still here? Ha ha, darn, okay.
Whatever we wanted, the county would do, I swear.
Yeah, okay, but they all know how important a new school is to, you know, growth and development, and, you know, just overall economic development of this community, so I think it's worth checking in, because, I mean, I think, what was it, $500,000 for the Skill Center? Dan probably knows, okay.
I, I do know that quite well, just for the record. $3.5 million from the city and the county, that helped match a $7.3 million state commitment, the college picked up the balance. So the total project, $16 million, won $6 million.
Which, by the way, I just had a tour yesterday of the Skill Center, and it is so impressive, the work that they're doing there. Second idea for grants, last year, the state legislature passed a bill, I don't remember the number, but it's called, well, actually, I do, I have it right here, because I just looked it up, HB 3409, and it's specifically grants for communities to build resilience hubs, and so since that was a big part of what your plan was for the high school, to make it a community shelter, that money, actually, that, that bill went into law in July of last year, so I expect those grants should be available, and it would really be worth checking into that. And the third idea is that our governor has just announced after the teacher strike in Portland, that we need to fund schools differently, and so, you know, the next legislative session starts in February, and I expect that there will be some bills that we could all lobby for to help think about different ways of funding new buildings. I mean, it's really, it's really a shame the way this state funds schools, you know, that everything has to come from property taxes, so, you know, we have a couple of, I believe Dan Bonham was supportive of this bond, he had a sign in front of his house, so he's our state senator, maybe we should be approaching him and asking him to think about sponsoring a bill, to think about other ways to fund schools, so those are three ideas.
Thank you.
Hey, if it's about places to find money, you talk away, Jen.
Might be a little different than what you're thinking. I just want to make a statement, and I had made this to Steve a little earlier, I think in general, as a community, and as a board, city council and commissioners, we need to recognize and acknowledge grants are tax money, they're produced by the taxpayer. So being fiscally responsible in the way we invest our money and not look at it as free money, because it's not, it's not free money, guys, it's our money. So it just really matters that we, I think, address that and acknowledge that as groups, as a board, as a school district, moving forward, because you're going to, it's deaf ears out there, if you guys don't acknowledge that, I know, it needs to be acknowledged for me, because as business owners, we're busting our booty, we're paying taxes, so it's tax money, federal state tax money comes out of every single one of our pockets, well, those that pay taxes, that's it.
Grant and tax benefits, right? Yeah, anybody get the tax shelter tax benefit?
I don't know, I haven't got the tax benefit, but, you know, I mean, maybe we're not listening to what I'm talking about.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move us on, we've, again, already kind of segued into the next square, which is how should we take action? You've heard a little bit from Director Aparicio about kind of the timelines and some of the options we're up against right now, but I will go ahead and open it up to the rest of the board first to start the discussion, and then we will open up the floor.
I did try to capture some comments, and one comment that I had heard that I'm adding from my voice is taking available property to market, so any property that's, if there's any that we're sitting on that could be sold, we should evaluate and do that, and then I wrote down the dates that Director Aparicio mentioned for possible going to a May ballot, other ideas.
I'll, I'll start off, I, I, based on what I'm hearing- I'll start off. Based on what I'm hearing today, I think there's a way to build on the momentum that is there. I think Commissioner Haggy mentioned that earlier. But I think some of the comments in terms of that untapped potential of Watanka, and, you know, how can we reuse and expand that, I think is a viable option to continue to explore. Now the question would be, could we pivot quickly enough? And now, aside from, say, the town halls and stuff, there are just kind of the nuts and bolts of stuff of like, when things need to be filed for, when things need to be applied for, you know, I think that could be a challenge to move that quickly. But I think from just a broader idea and concept that would probably resonate with more people, this renovation and expansion of Watanka seems to be something that I think would rise to the top.
All right. Well, maybe it would help if I read some more prompts. Yeah? The questions that we have under this? So what do you believe we should do next? What are specific things that we should change? Or what should extend beyond this meeting? Anyone?
I'm sorry. I was talking to someone. I'm terrible. Can you repeat that?
Okay, I will, just for you. What do you believe we should do next? What specific things should we change? Or what should extend beyond this meeting tonight?
Robin, leave the mic. I'm just taking my workout off for a minute and just talk for myself. I think we need to do some more polling. I think we need to understand, I know the timeline doesn't really line up for it, but, you know, the polling was broadly almost right previously. And so if we were to do a bit more polling, I think we would gain a lot of information about it. I think it's easy, sometimes we get caught in our loop of, we all understand the problem, but what we heard about the seniors is we don't all understand the problem. And the polling just helps us understand the scope of what that is in our community and allows us to bring, whether it is this plan or a different plan, allows us to bring the right plan forwards. Every time we do it, and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't fly, it's obviously pretty devastating. And so, you know, we're really, my direction would be do something that we know is really going to work really well, for sure. Thanks. Put my mic back on.
I just want to piggyback off of that, maybe add some different ways that we poll. Not everybody lives on their phone. Not everybody lives on their computer. Hate to say it. Stand in front of the post office is the best for any, any polling. And you just get a broader range. I think you get a more broader range of feedback that way. Yeah, I agree, though. Polling, more, more, more and more.
I'm willing to remain the PAC treasure. I am not willing to volunteer 60 hours between now and May. Robin is willing to run a website, but not willing to volunteer 100 hours a week between now and May. So it's going to take some, what needs to happen next. If there is any intention to go for a May ballot, going to need to bring in new PAC leadership to carry out the campaign.
Can you expand on what your hours were spent on? Can you explain what your experience with that and what?
What did we spend our time doing? What does the PAC do? So we are the group that actively campaigned for the yes vote. If it said vote yes, it came from the PAC. If it had facts, just facts, no vote yes, it came from the school district. So what was visible were yard signs, billboards, business signs. So that's one part of it. We went to just about every community group, so I think Lions, Rotary, et cetera. We canvassed. We organized canvassing. We fundraised to pay money to have informative information about how to effectively canvas. Lot of fundraising, lot of door knocking, asking for dollars. We ran social media, which was actually highly effective for reach. We ran a high school club for political action. Really crazy and interesting and rewarding. Gosh.
One question I can answer about the senior center might be helpful. So we clearly went to the senior center with an intention to share truthful, honest integrity and integral information about the bond. The bylaws that stay in the, at the senior center are that they can only allow political activities in the senior center if they also allow the opposition into as well. And since there was no organized opposition, we weren't, according to the bylaws, not allowed to go to the senior center and be political activists.
Was that opposition? Was that?
We would not go out and ask a political action committee. There was opposition?
Yeah.
Social media?
Yeah, but they weren't. Yeah, I mean, we don't also, from a PAC's point of view, it's never in our interest to kind of say, negative, right, and be negative. You know, we were always wanting to be positive. At the end of the day, this is about education and kids. We all know that. But, you know, that's also really key. The other things that we spend lots of time doing are answering questions, building media, talking to news outlets, navigating the myriad of information delineation in this community, and trying to fill those gaps with quality information. One of the problems that we see in social media, as you've noticed, is that when there's a gap, when there's an information, like a question that people can't answer, the social media void fills that void of information with information that's incorrect often, right? Not always incorrect, not always wrong, but if whatever, if there's a hole and there is a gap in the information situation, then the Facebook just fills that gap. And often people, it can be filled, and then the science of conspiracies say that it fills it with fear, right? We fill it with what we think is the worst thing that can happen. And it's, you know, it's human nature to do that. And it's not, and it's, again, I'm not being negative towards people around that. It's just a really effective life. And I did the same thing, you know, with government. I listened to the Congress and the federal, and, you know, the stuff that I don't know, you know, you're just like, oh, if this is what we do know, then what do we don't know? So I'll stop talking and pass.
That's okay. I just, I was just thinking of like, that's really funny, that I actually am struggling to fill the 40 hours a week. Maybe, we should have asked my teenage son what I do with all my time. 40 hours a week, yeah, for, just for my PAC volunteering. Yeah, so lot of phone, lot of email, lot of in-person, one-on-one conversations, fundraising, and regulatory jazz.
There's a lot of planning.
There is a lot of planning and strategizing and, yeah, there's a lot of human beings to try to get activated.
Yeah, essentially, I know, I have a model. So that was, oh.
Okay, I'm going to kind of redirect us back. We had a nice little segue to the PAC there. So it sounds like if things were to move forward, that would definitely be a factor that needs to be investigated. But does anyone have anything that they would like to add on what we should do, what the board should do to take action? I've heard a little bit about polling, maybe expanding on what people feel we should poll, what the next steps are, specific things, maybe tweaks in a package that you might like to see, et cetera.
So we had a lot of questions about, or a lot of statements about, the bond is too expensive. 140 is too expensive. 90 would be better. Maybe 100 would be better. So how do we explain, if we go out for a bond again, how we can build a structure that meets our needs, just like the new one would have, for less money? Or does that mean that we really seriously look at renovating Watanka and adding to it? And would that be a positive reaction? I mean, just thinking about it, would you get a positive reaction for that if it's coupled with this will reduce cost? Or would that be negative because, for some other reason I can't think of? But anyway, that whole question, that should be part of our action and part of our thinking.
You just waited till I walked all the way back down here, Marie? Just making sure I get my steps in. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think this is very tricky, because of course, there's very little time, and we need to get a lot of information out to folks. And I think, getting back to your point of, you know, in the community, clearly 140 was too much. Is it possible for us to show the community, this is what you can get for 90 million, this is what you can get for 100 million, this is what you can get for 110, this is what it looks like if you get 120? So that it's, there's a, and I know that it might be challenging, I mean, to do that for a whole slew of reasons, but if we were able to show people what that money will get you today, that I would hope that it might help.
Were you thinking like the build a bond like we did?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so we did do that, but the scenario that was looked at, yeah, we could put it out more publicly, but we did look at 120, 140, 160, 180, and had the polling according. And then we did 120, 130, 140, and a second polling. So I think, shoot it, the woman left. But, you know, it seems to me similarly, we could do to the renovate, expand Watanka scenario in similar fashion of like, hey, what is kind of the bare bones of like, get the needed square footage to meet the capacity of our enrollment, make that functional, safe, secure, adequate for education, and then, you know, what are kind of the additional add-ons from there? You know, athletics and all that, and kind of have that same, you know, gradation of numbers, you know, in either 10 million or 20 million increments, whatever makes sense based on kind of where our baseline is. And the polling, you know, would inform or direct the pathway from there.
I have just a comment. Financially wise, when we look at what the value of the dollar is now, and what it's going to be in nine months, a year, two years, we're not going to get the same amount of money for that dollar. So no matter how we go back and forth with numbers, what the ask is now, by the time a school gets built, is not going to be the same dollar amount. And we're probably going to get less for what we thought we were going to, what we were putting in for. So, you know, that's another thing we have to remember. Our economy right now stinks, and we don't know where it's going. So, you know, the longer we put things out, the less that dollar's going to count towards anything. And I think we need to be kind of fiscally responsible at long term as well as short term.
Yeah, sorry, last thing. I've got one question and one other thing. So the county is still talking about doing sports complex on that other side, and I'd love to see us try and engage some conversations with them about that project and doing some, some collaboration opportunity exists. I don't know what it is, but something exists. And then I'm wondering if we have a cost on that triangular Watanka, if I understand that. Do we have a cost?
Do you want to reiterate the cost, kind of what the rung up of the cost?
Rough estimate for this concept.
Yeah, so this is where it gets tricky, and I know we'll do a better job, maybe explain it in another one. But so just so everyone remembers, so we have hard costs, that's if you went out and got a bid, that's what the contractor would, you know, put forward as a cost that you pay for the building. And we have what's called soft costs, and those are the costs for permits, architecture and engineering fees, furniture, new equipment, everything that isn't actually hard construction. And those also include contingencies, so that if something happens, you've got the money to finish a construction. And so sometimes you have some things that you don't actually know if are going to be in the final project on a wish list. And toward the end, if the contingencies aren't used, then you can fund additional pieces. So when we talk about new construction, and I don't know offhand exactly or remember the numbers, but new construction today is, you know, somewhere in the $600 a square foot range for, for an institutional building, well, pretty much any building, frankly. And just a little bit of a problem that we noticed is those that look to the 2018 facilities condition assessment, those dollars were in the high 200s or 300s. The cost of construction has really essentially doubled since the 2018. And that's a hard thing, because we did get comments online, what about Caldera High School that was bid in 2018? And that's, you know, what's that number per square foot? And so that's the one in Ben. So that's a little bit of a fact problem that we run against. So 600 there, what would a renovation be? You know, perhaps it's 400, that's what I'm saying. And so when you take the combination of a renovation addition, that's where, if you had 100, 100, say, thousand some square feet, it's 600, and then 50,000 square feet, it's say 400, or 300 maybe, depending on what you do to that space, you are going to, you're going to save something in that 15, 20% range of the overall construction cost. Again, super high level analysis. I think the point made earlier, which is true, is you have to accept perhaps, you know, you would never build, I'm not sure why, they did build it this way, you'd never build a building for school for kids with no windows, right? Maybe that was the thing they did then, but today we wouldn't do it. So you'd have to figure out, you know, they have the library in the middle, and maybe they thought that was okay. And so you'd have to accept at least a portion. Now, it's not like you have a 150,000 square foot school with no windows, and you're trying to renovate it. It isn't that much space, but it is enough to say that you're not getting perhaps an ideal result. You're putting some money into something that would not necessarily be there. One example I can give you, though, is to think longer term. So when we did the San Barlo renovation, we did a new wing. We tore down a wing that wasn't very good, but we left a classroom wing. But their long-range plan is to go back in, you know, again, 12 years or whatever, to replace those classroom wings. So they actually, and we planned it that way, so that it's all set up that when they go back and say, hey, that was 19, in that case, 70s wing, when they get the next bond issue, they will replace those classroom wings. So, because they also had the same thing, school classrooms with no windows. So that's another way to look at it, is over time, do you say the building is upgraded instead of all at once? It's not going to be as cost-effective. One good thing is the economy isn't, I guess, one good thing about the economy isn't so good, is the cost of construction is flattening out. So our escalation factors are flattening out, which is a good thing. If this was a year ago, we would tell you, well, if you cut 10 million off the project today, because you didn't get this, if you wait a year, that 10 million is going to be gone. I don't think that's the case now. We're really almost seeing a close-to-flat escalation rate. So that's a good thing. Did that answer the question about cost? Yes, not quite. Yeah, he's going to, he's going to correct me a little bit.
He doesn't like when I do that. But those numbers that he's quoting, it's for the building itself, okay? Because the complexity on a high school site, if you were to do an elementary school site, you're basically on a 10-acre, 12-acre site. We're on a much larger site. So once you factor So, once you factor in the cost of doing all of the site work, a lot of times what they'll do is when you look at projects that are done in other districts, what you'll see is they'll quote a cost per square foot to build that school, but they're gonna be factoring in the cost of doing work on the sports fields. You'll also notice that on this particular site, there's no frontage that is actually developed around the site. And the likelihood that the city is going to require frontage and roadway work done and utilities factor into additional costs of developing on this site. So by the time you take that 600 or that $450 number, you add those numbers on top, you're really starting to talk about numbers that might be in the range of $700 a square foot for that facility. Now, the escalation is the other part of this too. The escalation is going to take that number and push that up a little bit. You touched on that before in your comment, and you just touched on it again. We shared in those community advisory committee group meetings what has been happening to the cost of construction over time. And there were some projections that we were sharing, and it was anywhere from 6 to 8%. It is true that those numbers have flattened out, it's almost flattened. I think the last number that I saw was about 3.5% for construction in the state of Oregon is what is being projected right now. So when we do our cost estimates, that's the number that we're using on a yearly basis going forward. On a project like this, you have to project that number out two and a half to three years because that's when the construction is actually taking place, right? And so that's where the contingency comes in. So you can take that $600 number or that 450 and apply those to it and start to see how that number starts pushing up.
One small thing too that we didn't mention, in the, in this option, we did include the cost of demoing Watanaka, which was, I think, around 2.5 plus 3 million, somewhere in that range, or 5.9 by the time it's the project cost, yeah. So that is a, that would be a, we would still demo some things, but it would be some savings for sure.
One last thing, sorry. One of the reasons why we discussed the renovation of Watanaka during the community advisory committee meetings, and the discussion about what happens to those students in that facility while this construction is going on, was a major factor in the understanding of building a new school on one side of the site and then tearing the other one down to complete the project was a big factor in that decision. To do what we're talking about right here is, it can still be done. I've done a number of renovations on large facilities in the past, but the one thing that it does is in order to keep those students in that facility, you have to extend the length of construction time to build it because you can't do anything where the students are at. And once you build the new portions of the building, you can then use that as swing space and then go in and do the renovation. So it takes longer and time costs money. And that's what kind of diminishes that savings on a renovation. And those all need to be factored in when you're doing the final number.
Okay, I'm gonna grab my giant hook, sorry, pulling them off the stage. So we do have just a little over 15 minutes left, so I am gonna go ahead and turn it back to Director Richardson to do a recap of this last section and to talk about the next steps of the board.
Thanks very much. So we talked a lot about, there are lots of additional ideas and grant ideas, how should we take action? There are lots of options, it sounds like, or some options. We talked about available property to market, considering a May ballot this next year initiative to build on momentum with a quick pivot. There is discussion about polling, repeat polling to gain knowledge and understand, to seek direction for the, and reassess the polling scope. We're gonna add channels to improve the polling scopes, that you get a better sample size. And look at the bond to reduce the cost. And then a lot of discussion about the facilities report, so this brings us to telling the story. The action you take requires, what do you say to the community? We said no in November, and you say, we need to think about what it is that we say. What did we learn? What are we hearing? And how are we acting on that information? So that will require the polling information. But one of the important pieces of the story is to communicate the facilities report and the benefit of using those reports with the waiver, so it doesn't expire and getting the 6 million from ODE. That redo the facilities report will require a two-year timeframe, and so that really delays if we re-approach for a bond passes. Pivoting to renovation concepts, and so what is the cost change? The real number to come back on a bond, which would include renovating on the Watanaka site, leveraging off that idea for exploring the untapped potential of the existing facility. And tell the story of why and if we ask for less money, are you getting less for our students? Are you accepting less? What is that piece of this information based on what we've learned, what the community can bear, and how we've explored other options? So what do we have and we need? We heard from the PAC that people and resources are tired, thank you for your hard work, but I get that. We do, the PAC has a website owner and a treasurer, but it's gonna need new leadership. And the PAC does a lot of stuff, and I listed those. Do we have time to mobilize and access all of this and not lose the momentum? We also wanted to include in this story, what happens to the Innovations Academy students if you build on the Watanaka site and renovate? And how does that impact your cost because it takes longer to build? Did I get it? There's more content on the back, I'm not throwing it away, it'll be part of this to inform the board so that we can have some direction. These pieces here about engagement strategy and contingency, what if we go out again in May and we are told no again? Then we need to think about, well, what happens? I think it helps even emotionally because in November, if you think we're gonna get the bond, the community knows we have the need, we're gonna pass it, and you don't, then it feels like you have the wind knocked out of your sails. I think it helps us to prepare, at least the message for our kids, that we value you, your education is first, and we'll get through it, even hopefully we don't have to do that. Engagement strategy, that will come off of polling information and all of this other feedback that you guys have given us, how we need to talk to even more groups and across the broader spectrum of the community, especially seniors. But who haven't, we asked, who's not at the table? My favorite question. Okay.
So, one of the things that I wanted to say is that what really shocked me during this process is the number of people who expressed severe doubt about the leadership of the school district and whether or not the information they were getting was accurate. I did not see that coming, I will say that. They took it all the way back to completely different administration, completely different board. And so I've been thinking a lot about that and thinking, maybe this goes under the engagement strategy, but one of the things that some of the groups that I belong to who couldn't take a position as far as endorsing the bond measure, what we tried to do is say why we supported a school. And I'm wondering if we might be of assistance this time before we come out with the full new proposal for the bond? What if we did a marketing around us saying why we support the school district and why we believe that they're honest and that they are telling us the truth and that this is what we need to do? Because people kind of have a short attention span, right? So if we give them a couple of months of just talking about that and sort of allaying their fears that they seem to have, that I feel are very unreasonable, but they're obviously reasonable to them, right? So maybe that's something we could consider. And the other thing I wanted to say is that my day job is a financial advisor. And so I know that most people, unless they're engineers and love spreadsheets, when you start talking about dollars, their eyes start rolling back in their head. And they're looking for the story. Money is very emotional. And they will make, they will override their brain that's telling them, this makes sense, the dollars make sense, but they will almost always go with their gut. And so that is another reason that I think we really need to lay that groundwork for people so that they can make an emotional decision that, and understand that the right emotional decision is that this is what is best for our town and our kids and everything else that it ties into. And I'm in sales too, and the same, same thing, you know, right? They are, they're always looking for what you're not telling them, what you're hiding, whatever, but they will always buy from someone they like, even if they don't understand what you're selling them. Who is the "we"? Who's the "we"? We need to... Well, I think "we" as a community, that's my personal opinion. So I think probably everybody in this room, but I also think everybody in this room also understands the numbers and cares about what that means. But I honestly think if we don't deal with some of this emotional stuff, they won't care if we come down on the price because they're still not gonna believe if we're really telling them the truth or not. That's just my take on it. But, and like I said, I do belong to some groups and I don't speak for any of them, so if you know what groups I'm talking about, I'm only speaking for myself. But I think there is a lot of room in this community for people who would be tied and not be able to speak out and say, I support the bond, to have some other role that's a little less direct, but nevertheless extremely impactful. Thank you for that, I appreciate the comment about the "we". And I just, I will double down on that and say, and, we also need those groups to say we support our school. We need the county commissioners, we need the city council, we need community service organizations to say we support our kids, we want our kids to be safe and be proud of where they go to school.
My name's Doug Nelson, and I'm a retired school superintendent, having been superintendent in two different school districts in two different states. And I passed a number of bond issues, and I failed a number of bond issues. But one of the things I found in the first bond issue I ran, people were upset with the school district at that time because of a vote on the high school that took 20 years beforehand. And they had to, and when we ran the bond issue, they had to come out and say, we didn't like that vote and we're still voting no. And this was a district that passed operating levies at 80%. So sometimes a community just has to get it out of their system. And then coming back with a packet, we came back with a package that they could understand. We kept it simple, and I think that's the other important thing. The other thing I learned, going back to the comments that this lady just made, people don't relate to a district. It's an amorphous bureaucratic institution. They relate to schools. We changed the whole branding of our school district to call it, and it was called, it used to be the Ben Lepine Administrative School District Number One. Everybody loved that, right? We became the Ben Lepine Schools, and people can relate to the schools. So I would urge that, it's a subtle change, but it goes back to exactly what you were saying, people relate to the institution of schools. The third thing I would say is, schools are sacred to people, the buildings are. And you have to be very careful when you say, we're not going to continue this school, we're going to tear it down. So just keep, those are just some of my observations over about 20 years being a school superintendent in two different districts.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna walk very slowly up to the front in case anyone decides to raise their hand. Okay, Director Jones?
If no one has anything else, I want to thank everyone for coming.
One thing.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
At the buzzer.
We still have eight, nine minutes. I'm not gonna use all of it now, just playing to the clock. Just, you know, we do have some serious decisions in terms of application deadlines coming up, so just, very informally, just the idea of putting something that maybe resembles that Watanaka renovation expansion scenario forward, is that palatable for people or is that something that folks would be on board with as early as May? Because if not, again, we're gonna have to secure the grants in January to redo the Facility Condition Assessment, the long-range plan, which will extend that timeframe, which it's just time. It's not that we have to, but I'm just curious on just those hearing the discussion tonight, does May make sense? Or do we continue to do some of these elements, you know, the polling ideas and some of the other engagement opportunities that were brought forward? So just, quick showing hands, May or...
May makes sense to me. I mean, I can understand the need for it, but when you say the Watanaka renovation, I mean, I was one of those teachers who taught in one of those classrooms for 22 years. No, you know, it's terrible. And it's not just about windows, it's about safety, it's about so many other things. And the things that I heard tonight, I don't think, it doesn't sound like it's gonna be a big savings. So I would say yes to May, but that would, but not for that. Reducing costs in other ways, finding other sources of funding, and putting the plan out there, you know, for people to see. Putting more of a plan out there for people to see. That's just my personal.
I had a student have Watanaka in the 90s, it was in 1990. I don't care about it, the hallways are small, the classrooms are small, there's no window. It's just hard to imagine the return on an investment renovating that space, it's so small. And so I just, I mean, the experts would know, but I guess I have some reservations.
Yeah, I think I agree with the two former speakers. I think that simplifying the package to only focus on the high school and perhaps not address the historic Dallas High School, not make any mention of district offices, just really focusing all the money on the high school. Again, this is just going back to time canvassing, speaking with people in the community. That's just my takeaway. But I do think that the kids and the teachers deserve a very safe, healthy environment, and I think building from new is the only way forward.
Okay, any other thoughts on that? Siobhan, I gave you the warning, I wasn't walking back there with a microphone.
If we give them renderings and, you know, put any money into the old high school or address district offices, in my post-election conversation, alone, it would gain 50 votes. That's my little circles. Then to stop my head, the rendering will be the importance to justify dollars. 140, straight up too much. Athletics dividing the down. Summer boards are against, not for renovation, I am for May.
Okay, so just to reiterate what I'm here, please correct me. Continue with the package that was on the bond prior at a lower rate by taking off the renovations of the Dallas High School repurposing and the added money that was going to be put towards athletics to make that building, that package smaller, more palatable, with the addition of getting some renderings, which would be an added cost to the district? Or the city, or whomever? Yeah.
Jose?
So we have to file by the 14th, right?
For Awesome.
Right.
But we still have, we would still have time to put a poll out and...
Right.
We could, we could submit and then pull it out.
Anyone else?
We still got five minutes on the clock.
I think getting the number down is smart, I think trying to figure out other dollar sources is smart. I think you need to be really careful though because, you know, having that initial number and then people like, oh, well, they could have done it for cheaper, why didn't they... and then people like, oh, well, they could've done it for cheaper, why didn't they do it in the first place? So I think you have to, again, that transparency, talk to the story that we have to have a new building. And I, I think there, I think it's doable, but I think the message has to be really strong.
And there's new money available, it just simply wasn't available when we launched last, like you're saying. There's two legislative opportunities for more.
I think, I think people would respect the effort...
Sorry, Debbie, you're very soft spoken. Really?
I think people would respect the request if you were so clear to say, we heard you, we went and found these additional sources of funding, we are taking this out of the package to make it less, and, you know, two or three thing, two or, and maybe some explanation of, you know, why it can't be $90 million, because $90 million would house only 3/4 of our students. Or, or it won't pay for the safety protocols that new schools need, you know? So, just really addressing their, and, we heard you, here's a, here's a more complete plan of what you're do, what you're buying, what you're getting for your money.
And maybe a coherent, clear, pointed statement of how seniors can benefit from this, in some way.
Yeah, my name is Matthew Jason, and I do live here in, in the Dells. And, I, I really think that what is not really either understood or realized, but we are only talking about one school, the Dallas High School. And, from the discussions that we've had in the, in the bond meetings, the committee meetings, the, these schools, brand new, have a 30-year shelf life. So, when we talk about 90 million, 140 million, this is gonna go on, and on, and on, and on. So, when we talk about just this school, you know, there are other schools in, in Wasco County that need to be repaired as well. So, so, we're not just talking about one school here, you know? And when we, you know, we're, we're, I think what most people are looking at is, is that they think that if this school bond passes, we fix the schools. Well, that, that's not the case. That's not the case at all. We have a lot of other schools that are, what, 50 years plus? 50 or more? So, I'm just saying, so, these, these school bonds will not stop. And so, when people think that, you know, if we just pass this one bond, that we're, we're done, we're good, we're good for 30 years. No, that's not the case. I, I think that, I think this is possibly what the voters are actually looking at as well. They're not just thinking it's gonna stop at 140 million, it's gonna keep going. And, I'm just, I've, I've spoke to Jose Apresio, Apresio, sorry, that, you know, these, these schools, you know, it's just gonna go from one to the next. And, huh? It's true, it's a very, it's a very, very hard solution. I don't think that there's absolutely, there's nobody that's gonna say, no, we wanna deny the children, we want to deny them a decent education, we don't wanna do that. I, I get that. But, I, I do think in the economic situation that this country is in, I, I don't think that passing school bond measures is really gonna even be feasible. I mean, I, I know I'm kind of the Debbie Downer on this, but I, you know, I look at things in absolute worst-case scenarios. And, what Jose and I had talked with about is, what about the cost overruns? Okay, so if we look at inflation and stuff like that, I won't get into an economic discussion on that, but inflation will probably, it'll probably rise. And so then, that means that these gentlemen behind me, they have models for this rate of inflation, and they're saying from, if I, if I'm not mistaken, they're saying an annual, year-over-year of 3%. And does that compound? I think that compounds. Okay, so, so first year is 3, 6, 9. So, as you could see, costs could spiral out of control, and when people that are the older generation, no, no dig on this, but they are on fixed incomes, and it's a hard no, okay? Because I know for a fact, I've talked to some elderly people, and they say even as much as $50 a month is gonna bust them. Okay? So, and if this, this last one of 140 million would've passed, you'd be having a bunch of old people moving out of the Dells, and there's no two ways about that. So, I, you know, I, I tend to look at things a little bit more realistically. I think that it's a very, very exciting thing to, to speculate, you know, oh, we're going to get, you know, doctors, lawyers, brighter students, more students, the brightest, you know? And I just, I, you know, I, I think we should be looking at things a little bit more realistically, you know? And it's not to say that these types of dreams are not possible, but, I just, I think that this is, this is too much, too fast, and I don't, I don't even know how many bond measures have already failed. And, there, there is, there is trust issues, you know? We had the internal polling for the bond committee, it came back, if I'm not mistaken, of 93 million. So then, we all agreed to go to 140, and right there, that's, that's your no vote. Because you guys had the voter approval for 93, and we went too much, and went for the 140, and it didn't pass. 90, well, the, the, the internal polling that we had in the state, or, I'm sorry, not the state, but in the county, that, that was done, no, it was 93 from my, from my recollection. It's okay, it's not, it's not an argument, I'm just saying, but, the point being is, is that it was, you know, we should've kept the number closer to what the polling was, and then you'd had a better, a better outcome. So, I, I'm just, I... Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay, I'll, I'm done, thank you.
Just real quick, what I wanted to say to that is, yes, and, Google is coming back on the tax rolls, right? So we just, just this year, they started coming on, the enterprise zone expired, and we're gonna have more tax dollars, so our tax situation is gonna look very differently. I don't think we wanted to go there with this one, because we need a high school now, yesterday, 50 years ago. But, yes, people worry about that, but maybe we should be reminding them that, that that doesn't mean that if we're gonna need more schools, that their personal tax dollar amount is going to go up, but that we have additional tax coming from Google and other entities coming on board that can help us pay for the future, that we're only looking at this one thing just to get us going.
Okay, on that note, I am going to return it over to Chair Jones.
All right, again, thank you everyone for coming, some good input, gives us a lot to think about. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting.